Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the South Orange Village Planning Board for Wednesday, September 11, 2013. A roll call please.
Yes, Mr. Brown, Mr. Colton Max?
Here.
Mr. Lorna?
Here.
Mr. Rosner?
Here.
Mr. Hutt?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Present.
Mrs. Torpe. Reverend Wilson. Ms. Gooja.
Here.
Mr. Allen. And Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Thank you. This is pursuant to Section 5, Chapter 231, PL 1975. This is to state for the record that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the public by posting and maintaining the annual notice of regular meetings on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mailing the annual notice of regular meetings for 2013 to the South Orange Maplewood News Record and the Star Ledger in December 2012, and by filing said notice in the office of the Village Clerk. We're going to move around the agenda just briefly to first we are going to talk about the application to be heard because they're not going to be heard. So case number 226, Seton Hall University, University Center, this is block 1901, lot 3, 400 South Orange Avenue. Preliminary and final site plan, the applicant seeks to construct a new university center, and I believe they're asking for a postponement.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are asking for the matter to be carried until the November hearing. And we'd also like to note for the record--
Can you please lift the microphone?
Like to note for the record as well that we're granting an extension of time to the board, you know, through that meeting because I think the-- tonight we're getting close to or perhaps have just passed the under-20 day period for board action. So we'd like to grant, you know, put that on the record. And the reason why we're seeking adjournment, there have been significant parking issues around the university with the start of the school year. While the Board of Adjustment did recently approve a new parking deck, it's going to take a period of time to build that. The university feels it would like to address those parking issues over the next couple of months and try to find an interim solution and then come back for this approval. So that's the reason for the request of adjournment.
Okay, noted, all right.
And I would note that Mr. Garbini, Dennis Garbini, Vice President of the university is here this evening, and he's prepared to discuss with any members of the public the parking issues that have arose. So he's here to make himself available to discuss that outside of the hearing before the board.
All right, thank you. On board?
The only thing I want to point out, Mr. Chairman, is that we were provided with a revised schedule, and I want to make sure that they are aware of the fact that our November meeting is not a November meeting now. And I thought that would be useful to go over so that everybody's on the same page.
It's October 29.
Mm-hmm. It is when OJED.
October 29.
And it's not here.
At Sopac.
It is going to be where OJED.
At Sopac.
At Sopac.
Okay.
And will we have a quorum for that, to the best of our knowledge?
I assume this is what the board does, so they should be--
Well, the-- I might have suggested bringing this up first, but the point is, I mean, what I was going to say is that, I mean, I personally am able to make it. The December meeting, I don't know. I'm not speaking for anybody else, just myself. But my point is that normally when we set the schedule, we're consulted in setting the schedule. I recognize these are unusual circumstances, but none of us were asked, so I think it's worthwhile to at least consult to see whether or not, at this point, see, I mean, I get the sense that Michael's not going to be available. I don't know about anybody else, but you might want to at least--
I would. I mean, since the applicant is here for October 29th, can I see anybody who shows hands who will be available?
I can come.
Four, five.
I have to recuse myself after that.
One, two, three, four, five.
Oh, I can't go to Seton Hall anyway, so that's good.
One, two.
I have to recuse myself.
Okay. So put your hands up again. Three, four. So we'll have to see. Hopefully, we'll-- we have two more board members who aren't here, and we'll confirm if one's coming.
Danny's coming in right now, so you'd ask him--
I am, as soon as he gets here.
I'm just trying to help. Mr. Chairman.
I believe, Danny, before you take your hat off, will you be available on October 29th? That's our newly scheduled meeting. We're just making sure we have a quorum.
Check.
Check. In any case, thank you.
All right.
We will contact you if there's a problem.
Okay, and the record will reflect that it has been carried without further notice to October 29th.
Mr. Chairman, there is a meeting on October 7th, too, so we're not talking about that meeting.
They're asking for the 29th.
You're asking specifically for the meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is fine, because we have another applicant to be heard.
Just have one question. Can somebody elaborate on the parking issue?
You want to just--
Because I know we talked about parking on the plan, and I don't think any of us were aware that there was a parking debt going on before the zoning board.
Actually, when you approved the master plan back several months ago, there was a parking deck shown on that plan. In fact, there were two parking decks in alternate locations, both near the existing parking deck. And so that is on the master plan and ultimately was approved with variances by the Board of Adjustment last week.
Can you elaborate a little bit on what the parking issues are now?
Well, there is, as we had expressed before the Board of Adjustment, there is not quite enough parking at the university during certain peak hours. And so, you know, with the start of the school year and with some greater number of students coming in as freshmen and left as seniors, there was a need for more parking as the school year opened. And try as they might, the university was not able to accommodate all of those people on campus, and some of those persons parked in the neighborhood around the campus.
Okay.
Good.
And that's a situation we'd like to address.
So we see you here on the 29th. You're good? We'll see you on the twel-- we'll have a quorum.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
How are you?
And then quickly, the second case number 229, Janet Youssef's Care of San Giorgio Enterprise LLC, block 1005, lot 5, 52 Bose Avenue. That's a preliminary and final site plan. The applicant is seeking an expansion of existing restaurants, second floor addition, relocation of Storm Suitor. That's going to be carried to October.
October 7th is supposed to be October 29th.
That is correct.
And that meeting will be at?
That meeting will be at Sopac as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let's move it again.
All right. Now to the fun part of the evening. We have the distinct pleasure of honoring one of our own whose service to South Orange Village and the community and our board has been fantastic and for a long time. So Janine, if you would come up. Where should she come? To the microphone, I suppose. We don't do this very regularly, but we-- so I hope the cameras are on you. That's where they should be.
The camera's on from up here. This one here.
Yeah.
I don't need the camera.
You know, Janine's-- I will read the proclamation that we're giving her, but the point really of taking this moment is to thank you publicly for all the fantastic public service you've done for our board and the community. Your fingerprints are over so many of the items that we review continually, so many initiatives that are just the most valuable initiatives of our community have you've either authored or advocated or sustained or accelerated into being. I know the historic planning commission is meeting right outside here, certainly the Bike Path Initiative, the Greenway. So many fantastic additions to our community have now become part of our master plan. They started as elements under your authorship, or they were born under your authorship, and then they became elements of our master plan. So I've been personally privileged to work with you for many years. I know all the board shares my sentiment, so we thank you really from the bottom of our hearts. And I guess I should read your proclamation. I think it's written in old English, so bear with me. It says, "Recognizing and honoring Janine Bauer for seven years of service," and then eight years later, "of the South Orange Planning Board, whereas Janine Bauer was first appointed to the South Orange Planning Board in 2000, serving as a Class IV member, and whereas Janine served on the planning board from 2000 to 2006, and again from 2012 to 2013, and whereas Janine has always given unselfishly of her time expertise on the planning board, earning the respect of fellow planning board members and professionals, and making a difference in the community to where she lives, and whereas Janine has continuously demonstrated an uncommon measure of public spiritedness and has set a standard of excellence in public service." That's absolutely true. "Now therefore, I, Thomas W. Hutt, Chairman of the South Orange Planning Board, on behalf of the planning board and its professionals, do hereby acknowledge and thank Janine for her eight years of dedicated service to the South Orange Planning Board and for making a significant contribution to our village. And I personally and my board extend their best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors. I sign this 11th day of September 2013."
I want to say thank you very much for saying that. That's very meaningful to me. And I just want to say two things in response. One, all of the things that sometimes I get credit for really were started by other people, and I worked on those initiatives and helped, and, you know, I might take credit for accelerating a few things. That might be true, but--
Well, tonight--
Believe me, I stand on the shoulders of many, many people, and this community stands out. I'm very familiar with many, many communities, including in other states even where I work frequently, and the active citizenry and professionalism of our residents is really beyond parallel anywhere that I know of. So I'm really just one of the team, and you're all part of the team, so I respect everything that you've done and all the past planning boards. I mean, when I heard about this, because I kept asking, "Why do you want me to come to the planning board?" She was pretty secretive in the beginning, but, you know, I had to cross-examine her. But really, you know, when I even compare myself to the old timers and, you know, the, like the Buddy Bianchis, I don't even know how many people in this room now even remember, but, you know, he was the planning board chairman for 20 years. So anyway, but I thank you very much. And I'm also trying to clean out my house. I'm finally getting after my husband. He's really the pack rat who's saved things for 20 or 30 years, but I have a few things too. And one of the things, as we were going through boxes a couple of weekends ago, that I came across was this op-ed for the News Record that I think I authored in July '05. The one I pulled off my computer today was dated 9/2/05, if you can believe that. I'm going to pass it out. It says, "Wither Planning in South Orange." And, you know, while some of it doesn't really, you know, has obviously become dated, what hasn't become dated is actually my passion for really getting a whole new master plan because, as you know, and one of the things I'm always saying is, the heart of the master plan still dates from 1979. So I kind of go through this because we have been limping along on those reexam reports, and I have to credit Higher Grule and all of the board and professional staff of the village with always keeping our housing plan up to snuff and keeping us out of trouble. And I just want to say again, thank you for that, of course, and Village Council. And I did have a strong hand in some of those others, like the open space and the rec element and so on and so forth. But wow, we've got some other great stuff to do. Utility Service Plan, I know no one gets excited about things like that, but I do, and, you know, a lot of other things. So I hope you call master plan subcommittee meetings. I will be coming as Jane Q. Public, and I'm looking forward to that, so I'm just going to give these to Jeddah.
Give us our word. Thank you. All right.
It's not going to be a picture? We have to have it. Channy, we have to make you the official photographer.
We can take a screenshot of the video.
That's true. Okay. But it was so fast.
All right. Now down to business again. So, okay, we'll pass these along. Our next bit of business is the approval of various resolutions. This is case number 228.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have to approve the minutes for the--
Oh, thank you very much. Well done. We do. So do I hear a motion for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on July 16, 2013?
Would now be the time to indicate a need to take a revision to those minutes, or would it be after they've been introduced to us? That you make the revision after the--
After the motion is made.
I move the minutes be adopted as presented.
Second.
And now I think to offer an amendment. At the point in the minutes where it transitions into the Seton Hall case, there should be an indication that I had to recuse myself at that point and was not present for the remainder of the meeting.
Same here.
Same here, yep, please. Okay, with those amendments, do I hear a sec? Have we heard a second? Roll call? No, second we did.
Michael said it, yes.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we'll adopt those minutes. Thank you. Now on to our resolutions. The first resolution for approval is the case number 228, Third and Valley Urban Renewal LLC, block 2304, lot 3-9. It's 165 Valley Street. This is a preliminary final site plan. The applicant proposes to develop on the site a mixed-use residential and commercial structure. I think the council is here to--
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have before us this evening the resolution that would approve, memorialize the approval of the application for Third and Valley Urban Renewal LLC. It was distributed, first draft was distributed to the board's professionals, Amlin Engineering, as well as Higher and Grule, who added a great deal of detail. We were somewhat held back by the fact that the applicant has not submitted revised plans so that the review letter comments, of which there were many, had to be, each point, each item of those review letters had to go, be gone through to see whether or not that particular item had been addressed during the hearing, what the result was of that being addressed, and whether or not there still needed to be something done about it. And so with the help of Higher and Grule, Fred, I don't know if you're in on it, but certainly your office was, and Chuck Thomas from Amlin Engineering, I finally got together and had a resolution which I thought was what the board had decided. And as we often do, as a courtesy to the applicant, a copy was distributed to the applicant's council. That happened earlier this week because it took a while for us to get this together. I received comments from applicant's council today, of which they were, to say many would be an understatement. And I generally ask the boards if it is their policy to allow applicants to review resolutions than to try to go through what the applicant's comments are to see if they merit a change to what had been drafted. And I think that what I try to do, if I see an applicant has discovered an error or a typo or a mistake, obviously we should correct that. And I've tried to do that and accept the comments that the applicant has made which would make the resolution better. To the extent that the applicant has suggested changes or rewardings or that something was said a certain way or a certain fact is not in the resolution, but they believe it was part of the testimony, I drew less need to make that revision, focusing instead upon what the conditions are, because they really are what's going to govern what happens from here. So with the help of Amlin's and Higher and Grule's office, there are a number of conditions. You've seen them. There will be some change to those, which I think we ought to look at tonight, but for the most part, I think that's where we are right now. Unless the board wants to move in another direction, my suggestion would be to go through the revisions I've made to the resolution based on the applicant's comments. And with the help of the professionals, hopefully we're at a point now where we know exactly what has to happen from here on in.
So are you saying we should hear those things and postpone the vote and have a new resolution next month?
Well, we could do that. It's been a long and painful process. Because there weren't planned revisions, it made it a little more difficult. I wouldn't want to delay this application from going forward. I don't think the applicant would want that either. But I didn't feel that, given the number of comments that came so late in the process, and I don't blame the applicant, we took a long time to get our resolution drafted, that if they weren't substantive, I wasn't going to make that change. I didn't think it was necessary, nor did we have enough time for me to make 100 changes the same way. So what I did was go through and make the changes I thought were, if there was an error or there was something I was missing that made a difference, to make that change.
Did you reissue the revised resolution to the applicant?
I did, but I didn't get it back to her until after 6 o'clock. I don't know if she's seen it.
I have. I've reviewed it. I've marked it up.
All right.
Compared it against our document.
If you'd like, I can go through what changes I think that are--
But the board, this board hasn't seen it. Is that correct?
They haven't seen the applicant's changes.
No, your changes.
They haven't seen the changes I made after I received applicant's comments, no. They didn't get them until today.
Okay. But you do have them in front of you now, yes?
I do.
Would it be prudent for us to take the 15 minutes to have them photocopied? And, I mean, assuming that can be done and brought back up here? I mean, I'm going to feel a little bit leery about commenting on this if I don't have it in front of me. I mean, you're not talking, if you're talking about one or two minor changes, I'd say, okay, do it, but, I mean, I'm going to feel like I'm in the dark.
This is a 19-page resolution, if I remember reading it. It was 19 pages then. I don't know what it is now, but I'd sure like to see it.
Sure.
And I also have a couple of suggested changes, too, that we did discuss. Again, I don't know if it's part of the record or, after seeing what's happened at the BIFIS site, I would certainly like to see it in this resolution, even though it has been agreed to.
Should I do it?
Sure.
Okay.
But Jeddah, is that doable? Can we photocopy these, this massive thing? Well, we'd be yours, right? Is it every page? We need every page in?
Well, actually, you have, you have it there. Could I email it to you?
I have an extra copy. I made two. I would have made, I brought, first I made 10 copies of my revised one, and then I got hacked and got rid of the ones I made.
Is that a change as shown?
Hmm?
Patrick's version up here has changes shown on it. It's marked--
Tracked.
Tracked, thank you. So is that the version that you have an extra copy of?
I have one extra copy.
So if, why don't we, we can, while we're photocopying, we can hear the next bit and then come back and since, make it a little bit of a working--
Well, Jeddah is copying and--
Jeddah is copying, yes. That's a problem.
Adam, is there anybody else here in the building who could take care of that responsibility?
Why don't we do this? Why don't we hear the next bit of business, and then we can take a 15-minute pause or 10-minute pause, and then we can turn and then--
Do you want me to copy it? Show me where the copy machine is.
No, thank you.
I won't charge you my normal rate, I promise.
You can try and charge.
What?
You can try and charge.
Okay, let's do that. We'll do the rest of the business, I think, and then we'll deal with this.
Okay.
We will come back to case number 228. Currently now, we're going to discuss case number 230, Public Service Electric and Gas Company, Care of Jean N. Rotunda. This is block 2003, lot 12, 4-4, Fourth Street. This is a minor site plan and C variance. The applicant proposes to increase electric service capacity by upgrading and modernizing the electric process equipment at the existing South Orange substation. Do I have any--
I'll move the resolution.
Move the resolution. I hear a second?
Second.
Any comments on it? Nope? We should do a roll call on the resolution.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Colton Max?
Yes.
Mr. Lorna?
Yes.
Mr. Rosner?
Yes.
Mr. Hutt?
Yes.
And Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Is that all available for voting? Okay. And just before, then, one last bit of business, two more, is the amended resolution, case number 221, it's Rockhammer Investments LLC, block 1206, lot 7, 326 Meeker Street. This is a minor subdivision. The applicant seeks to subdivide the lot into two equal-sized lots. Pat, maybe you can discuss the pertinent issues with that amended resolution.
Mr. Delvecchio is here. Would you come up, please? The board, as you may recall, granted this subdivision on Meeker Street last December. Subsequent to that, the applicant contacted the township to say that the lot number designations that had been proposed on the plans in the resolution were not the lot designations that the tax assessor wanted to give to the lots in question, and he asked that the resolution be amended in that respect. And the second thing he asked was a clarification with respect to the house rebuilt on the new lot. There was testimony on the record, and if you looked at the resolution, you'll see it, that the house to be built on the next-door lot that was created would be about the same size as the house that was on the existing lot. But the planner at that night said, and it's in the record, that the house would be no longer than, no larger than 2,400 square feet, correct?
Correct.
That is a clarification that the applicant has asked this board to make as well, that the old resolution, the first resolution said it would be, I think, the exact same size of the house next door. The applicant has apparently drawn plans that says it's going to be 2,200 square feet, roughly?
Roughly the 2,200, 2,300 square feet, under 2,300.
And what size is the house next door?
The house next door is roughly 1,900 and change, but it'll be, that's three stories, will be two stories.
Okay. So because there was evidence in the record that they represented it would be no larger than 2,400 square feet, he's asked for that clarification so that he can go up to 2,200 square feet.
Move the resolution.
Those are the two changes.
Move the resolution.
We should vote on that, please.
Mr. Colton Max?
Yes.
Mr. Lorna?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosner?
I'm staying.
Wait, can I do--
Mr. Hutt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
And Ms. Gooja.
I'm staying. I don't think I was there for the scores.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay. We are going to now hear case 231, Luther P. Turner Jr. and Hazel A. Turner. This is block 704, lot 1. This is an application for completeness, 14 Kingman Road, minor site division. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the existing lot to create two lots with the intent to construct a one-family dwelling on the new lot. Mr. Hire, do you have any other comments rather than your report?
Now, after our August 2nd memo, we issued a subsequent memo September 4, 2013. They submitted the five additional items that we thought were critical. There are still 13 completely, there's technical waivers that are required, but at this point, we recommend the applicant, application is ready to be heard and be deemed complete.
Okay.
Board? Mr. Hire, I, the August 2nd memo that you referred to, on page 4, identified, what do you know, nine items that you said. In summary, we recommend the application be deemed incomplete, subject to the submission of the following materials. Now, I went through the materials that I received. This doesn't mean I got them all, but I just want to make sure. I saw seven of those nine items. I did not see items A, the revised checklist, or item C, the information pertaining to historic districts. So did we receive them and I just didn't receive them, or did we receive them, we not received them but just determined that seven out of nine was good enough, and those were the main ones, and these aren't?
Actually, with respect to the historic district designation, we received information that identified the property as a contributing structure in the Montrose District. So we did get that information. I'm not sure how we received it, but in the time period since the initial memo, the additional items we were, received were the boundary topographic survey--
Right.
--a revised subdivision plan, revised 200-foot radius map, and the environmental evaluation and updated checklist.
Right. Oh, you did get a revised check?
Yes.
Okay. Did we, did we get that?
I don't think we typically get it. I mean, we could, we do.
We don't get it when it's submitted.
Yeah.
We don't get it if it's revised. We do get it when it's submitted.
I would maybe say we didn't get it.
Okay. As long as, as long as you're saying we got it, then I'm, meaning the royal we, I'm satisfied.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, board. Do you hear a motion on completeness?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passed, so we will hear that case when we're ready. So now we will take a photocopy of adjournment, probably last 10 minutes. So now, we will take a photocopy adjournment, probably last ten minutes.
On the next page, applicant has requested that it be specifically stated that he testified pursuant to the redevelopment agreement, 1.1 million will be paid toward relocation of the Valley Village Rescue Squad. That's at the end of paragraph five. Everyone, where we are? On the next page, Mr. O'Looney is an architect. And at the bottom of that paragraph 10, the transform, his testimony was, and I think this is correct, the transformers would be integrated in the courtyard if PSC and G would agree. That sounds correct. On the next page, we have, in the first line at 15, stated, the word stated was removed. That was an error. At the end of that sentence, the fire department's review is limited to fire safety and emergency access. That's always the case. So, we made that change. Next page, in paragraph 19, insertion of the word platform is a better description of whether the walkway would hook up with the train. I don't know what that deleted is in 24. It doesn't seem to be there. On 26, bike path is described as an easement. And also, the word purpose was a change to purposes. In paragraph 30, the intersection is described as the intersection of Third and Valley. And parag, on the next page, with respect to the items the applicant had agreed to do, this is an extension of paragraph 35. You note that the number of units in the building was not 20 percent, it was actually 21, correct?
Yes.
Yes, it's 21 instead of 20 percent, which would've been 20. And again, down in 37, it talks about the contribution towards moving the rescue squad as explicitly stated, but that, I'm sure, is part of the redevelopers agreement, in any event. And 38, the re-timing of the signal has been discussed with the county, but it's only proposed at this point. Although apparently, it's been conceptually agreed to, it is only proposed at this point.
Isn't that different than what was testified to? I thought they discussed it with the county, and the county has agreed that the changes can be done.
It seemed to be what they said. It seemed to be what they said. And that seemed to be what my notes talked about.
Yeah, that's what they testified to. I mean, you can always replay it back. That's what was testified to. Not that it was proposed.
It's a good question, because it's important to the, to the-
It testified that the timing of the signal would be changed.
Did the applicant want to try to clarify that?
Well, it's proposed because it hasn't been done yet. The, what was testified to was that they'd had a discussion, they'd, they'd had, that Mr. Iannelli had met with them, had discussed it with the county. I don't believe the county has issued its formal approval yet.
For the re-timing, or for the, for the re-timing you're talking?
Yeah. I mean, that's, we've agreed to put up the money, but our, our point is simply to say, it's something that's proposed. Obviously, it isn't an existing condition.
At what point would that be done?
During their, during the, their final review, their final review with the county. The county will be looking at their intersection improvements and the timing of the light. So, that is their jurisdiction.
Yeah, I got the impression it was discussed, the county approved, although it wasn't in writing, but that the county approved it. I mean, that's what the testimony I thought was, and not exact words. But technically, if it's not approved by, by, officially by a board, or whatever, in writing, it's not proposed.
My take on it was the county had theoretically agreed to it, but in that, their final-
Theoretically, it's not.
And that's, that's all we said, is that they had agreed to the proposed re-
Having dealt with the county.
You want to take out proposed, I don't think that changes it. They'd agreed, but we do not have a written warning.
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, we didn't represent, we have a written approval.
Moving on.
Moving on to the following page, under decision and conditions. In paragraph two, I made the change to say that in the event there's a a significant alteration made to the approval by a different government agency having authority over the application, that they would have to return to the board. And in condition six, we talk about the outstanding items in Amelin's letter of May 30th. And I spoke with Chuck before the meeting about this. What we believe was missing would be, in the final line of this sentence, that item 50 and 51 will be reflected in appropriate land, planned revisions. Is that your proposal?
Let me just find. I think that was in, actually, I thought it was in the, are you talking about the last letter, the last line, I apologize, of item six?
Last line.
I thought in the revision that you sent earlier in the day, which reflected either Chuck or Eric's current and most recent revisions, I thought that number 50 was added to the first line. Not the first line, the first list of items, in line three and four, it says, "Those items have been addressed." That's where I thought 50 was added.
Doesn't it require revision, though, Chuck?
It will.
It will require revision either way.
Okay, but that's where I think it was, because I moved it over there.
So, we'll put it in both.
What is 50, Chuck?
That just has to do with the land. Landscape plans should depict the limits of the proposed retaining walls, railings, drainage structures along the southerly side of the structure. In the response letter, they, it was indicated that you will comply, so.
That's fine. I just thought, when I saw the revision, I thought it had been moved to a different part. Yeah, I have the number 50, but I moved it. That's fine. No, no problem.
The next change is in condition 12, that the bonded deposit will be determined by applicant's engineer, subject to the approval of a board engineer. That's actually standard.
Is that standard, rather than our engineer establishing the outcome?
They submitted in the board. And the next change was on condition 31, where the video inspection of the existing sanitary sewer line, per Amelin, should be not within Valley Road across site frontage and Third Street from Valley to Sloan, but just from the point of connection to the next downstream manhole.
That's correct.
Okay, so, that's not, that's a change since what you sent me today, Pat?
I just made that change with Chuck before the meeting.
Oh, okay, so, can you tell me-
So, take out the line, take out the words, "within Valley Road across the site frontage and in Third Street from Valley to Sloan Street." Take that out. Everything else is the same. And in the next sentence, 32, "The existing storm drainage beneath the NJ Transit Railway to which the project will connect will be videotaped." Add the words, "from the point of discharge to beneath the New Jersey Railway."
That's, that's correct.
That change was just made this evening.
What is the New Jersey Railway? I'm sorry.
New Jersey Transit, I'm trying to describe-
Step back towards.
Where they have to video.
Yeah.
Video inspection. Camera down?
Yep.
And or?
Unbanned.
You can go in there. And the final change was in 42, which adding the words, "in accordance to the terms of this resolution."
Can you just tell me, I'm sorry, Chuck, the last word, "from the point of discharge," to what?
Downstream, to the downstream portion of the line that crosses under the New Jersey Transit Railway. Transit Railroad. Also ultimately identifying the final discharge point. This is for the storm drain?
No, I understand, if it's, if we're...
Could you please speak into the microphone, sorry?
If it's the drainage from being, if it's the system underneath the trail, the railroad, then how does it end up at the railroad?
No.
So, read the language. Okay, well, we had, you'll tell me the language that our engineer gave us, if, if that's basically saying the same thing.
Yeah, you discussed that, right, during the hearing, that the drainage extends underneath the New Jersey Transit Railroad, and that's what we want to see videotaped, if there's any damage underneath that.
Right, it's the, how far it's going, because our engineer had said to...
Microphone. Microphone, Merrill.
Yeah, I'm just reading. To the, so it would be, how do we know where the endpoint is? He had said to the next downstream structure. Is that the equivalent?
No, yeah, further, to go underneath the railroad, that's what we want to know. To go underneath the railroad system, to that structure downstream after the railroad, that's what we're looking for.
Do we know what that length is? Do you have any idea?
That's part of the problem, it's, it's an unknown.
All right, let's go, move on, I mean, we have other...
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Is Michael?
Uh, no, again.
I'm sorry, Michael, I haven't, Michael had mentioned to me he had some...
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of issues that were testified to, and I know are on the record, but not clear here. One, I'll speak with, with Susan Gruhl, who's not here, is I believe the applicant agreed to have the emergency generators in operation prior to the, or, at the opening of the facilities for use. This is just saying you're going to install emergency generators, it doesn't say when.
Can you qual, can you suggest, uh, point out where that is specifically?
Well, here it's a number nine, but I mean, my comment was just in general, and Susan was very concerned, Miss Gruhl was concerned, concerned about that, that she wanted them in operation at the time, along with, I might as well add to that, because I didn't find it in here, along with all the security cameras and security equipment.
And the security cameras are in here.
Well, but in operation. I mean, it says they're going to be installed, but initially, it wasn't going to be in the beginning, and they agreed to install prior to the opening, I'll say to the public, for lack of a better word, for use. And then my last comment is, in light of what I see is happening by the BIFAS site, it was one that I was concerned with, is in testimony, you agreed to keep, your, your client agreed to keep all construction vehicles on the site and construction equipment on the site, and I don't see that here in the resolution versus on the street.
I don't know if that's reflected in any letters to check it. I don't remember.
Is that our purview to comment on that?
Excuse me?
Is that part of our purview to comment on that?
Well, it was part of their testimony when asking the question.
They said they were going to keep construction on site. I didn't know if that included the sidewalk or not, but that's, but...
Yeah, but I, I'm more concerned with the roads and so forth. We have, we have dumpsters on the street by BIFAS, we have construction going on in the street, which I understand, it's blocked up, but we have stuff that's parked there permanently, it looks like, and it's a mess.
But BIFAS did put that in their original testimony.
No, I understand that.
It's not BIFAS.
I understand that. Every time you get burned, three more paragraphs get added to the lease.
I don't know if it really burned on BIFAS, I don't know that it's terrible.
But when I, Village Gateway.
But I don't know that it's terrible, that it's...
You don't drive there anymore.
I do drive there, but it's not terrible.
And anyway, tho, those are my comments.
It adds a, it adds a minute.
I mean, it was testified to, so...
So are, are we talking about incorporating them, and it's so rare?
To put a dumpster out, I, to my recollection, you have to apply and put it in a certain location, it has to be then approved by the town.
Yeah, we have a dumpster permit, they have to...
So, it would go through a process, I think, within the village.
All, all I can tell you is what was testified to. When, when the question was asked and answered, it was answered that all equipment and trucks would be on site. I find it hard to believe, but...
There's no, there's no, there's no question, they said it, my real play, and I, and I, you know, when the, when the project gets close to finish, when the, the whole structure's there, and you need the, a couple pieces of equipment at the end, it's gonna be hard to believe they're not gonna need a permit for a parking space on the street.
It's not realistic, I mean, we're gonna have the whole structure up, what are they, what are they gonna do when they're getting to the end?
They'll have probably a little...
I, I didn't make the statement, they made the statement.
Yeah, but I, I mean, it's like, it's, yeah, but I think we can...
But there might be room along the side, on the, on the one side of the building.
I don't, you know, if they, if they get the town's engineers' approval, I don't really, you know, it just, it should be part of the resolution.
I, I assume, I assume they're gonna park their equipment on the street.
I, I agree that certainly in part about the emergency generation being operational from day one should be, of course, it would seem that that would just be an additional sentence, or even just a...
Along with the communication.
Well, inst, you know, I just don't know, I mean, well, the, they, obviously, is there reference after number nine to emergency generators in the resolution anywhere?
Can we resolve this by simply saying that we will agree to add language in number 29? Security cameras will be installed in the garage structure, which is there now, and will be in operation at the time the garage opens for the public.
That's all I'm asking for.
We have no problem.
Same thing with the generator.
Same thing with the generator at the end of number 39. Change the period to a comma and say, and will be in operation at the time the garage opens for the public, or for public use.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would hope you would be equally cooperative when we raise the issue of number 27, that says applicant will pre-wire the roof to accommodate solar panels. It should be the garage roof, since we never agreed to wire the roof on the residential portion.
Hold on, hold on now.
Right. It's just the garage roof.
All right, no problem. Okay, so, 29 to 39.
Mm-hmm.
Conditions 29 to 39.
Okay.
And applicant has a comment regarding 37?
27.
27.
They would like to qualify the location of solar panels to the garage.
Anybody read that?
Nope.
I'm sorry, can you repeat what it is you're asking for?
One of the things while we're in the neighborhood is number 27, the applicant will pre-wire the roof to accommodate solar panels, the garage roof.
They didn't agree to do it for the main structure, just for the garage.
I disagree with that.
That's what the plan showed?
Yes, that's what they agreed.
That's what the plan showed, Chuck.
Chuck, can I ask you? I thought in the comments that came, that either came from you or from Eric, number, paragraph number fi, condition five, I thought Eric asked for number 32 to be taken out of the next, the last line, Pat, in number five, I'm sorry, number...
Number six?
No. I'm sorry, I'm looking at my change numbers. Seven, I believe is the, condition seven.
Seven is higher rule.
Right. But I thought it came from the revisions today. What do you show for the numbers in the next to last line, the items to be reflected and changes on the board, on the plans?
For higher rule?
Yeah, in paragraph seven.
Three, 13, 15, 24, 30, 32?
Okay. Yeah, I, I thought in the, you sent me an earlier revision that just had a few items in it this afternoon. I thought 32 was taken out in that version you sent me today.
That would have been the changes I received today from Amelin.
Yeah, I don't, I'm...
But this is higher rule.
I know. I'm just, because I didn't take it out, but that's okay.
What is 32 in, in your letter, do you know?
No, it would have, it would actually have been the higher rule, May 30.
And the numbering is the same.
What?
I don't think the numbering is the same.
Okay, that was just a question. The fact that it's reflected in plans, it's no harm, no foul, I just had a note, so I was asking.
You mentioned something about the color of the window frames?
Right, that's not in the conditions, however, that's in the numbered paragraph, number 33, of the, the restation of the testimony.
Okay, Mr. O'Looney agreed that the window frames would be, what are you saying it should be?
Dark. Actually, there was a great discussion about that. The boards we brought showed a beige color on the frame. Susan felt strongly it should be dark, and Brian felt equally strongly that it should be beige, and he described what things he looked at in the town to sort of model that look of the...
I think in the end, it was clear that we didn't, that Susan didn't want white.
And we agreed, no white, but beige might not be considered dark if you don't...
I think dark is sort of descriptive, you know, darker than white, I think was what it was.
And if they want to say that, that's, I'm just concerned.
How about a zertone? Just leave it a zertone?
What?
Or just put in a zertone? Just brown, beige?
Brad, do you have any?
Oh, tote?
Right.
Would you say?
I said they agree that the window frames would not be white.
That's fine. That's all, then we're happy.
So they could be picked?
We didn't want it to be beige.
That's wrong.
Think as a bet.
If we don't like them, we'll make it change.
I have no problem with that.
That's what I'm saying.
So it would not be white, that's fine, thank you.
Paul has a paintbrush, he can go up there and paint them afterwards.
I'm sorry, what?
I said Paul has a paintbrush, he can always go out there and paint them whatever.
So that's the substantive changes that our council made, are there others that you, that are...
Yeah, there were one or two others that we had concern with back in the conditions.
Let's do it.
My documents, my red one is in.
Number 16, make sure the numbers are the same. 16 in conditions?
Paragraph 16, the first half of the defines, the last sentence that was added in, applicant to mill and repave is directed by the board village engineer, totally open-ended.
Isn't that covered elsewhere?
It was specifically covered in the paragraph that spoke about our willingness to repave half of the road, uh, one of the roads, and we agreed that we would be in compliance with the village's road opening permit if it required us to do the other half, and we agreed we would bond for the milling and repaving on the second half of that.
I recall that, but I don't...
I recall it too.
And that's in here, that was covered in here. But this then, this talked about other streets or roads.
It was covered in the facts, Merrill? I don't, I don't, is it in, not, is it not in the conditions?
I'm not sure what you're asking me, what's covered.
The part about milling and repaving, are you saying that's in the finding of facts?
No, I'm saying in paragraph 12, we deal specifically with the...
Right, 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 okay, so this, this last part of 16 should be deleted, the applicant to mill and repave.
Correct, because the milling and repaving is covered within 12.
It looks like that was a...
Otherwise, we'd have you mill and repave the whole village.
And hence our concern.
It was, it was worth a shot, you know, our taxes are high here.
Well, you didn't spend your municipal money painting the window frames on people's buildings.
Go get Michael going.
By the way, we, we're talking about white windows for the whole village, too.
Anything else?
You don't want to get me going with paved roads.
We leave county roads out of it.
I'm still waiting for you to pave through a road which you collected money for.
Well, it's coming soon.
Yeah. Except you didn't collect enough.
We've got the garage, maybe, we've got...
Roads always get paved the year after you move out.
I just know we skipped the one about the developers' break. I just want to, to indicate that you have a, I think I skipped it, it's towards the beginning. First of all, your very first one, which I'm sure is boilerplate, that will comply with all applicable township ordinances, yes, except to the extent that you've given us a waiver or variance from it. You also indicated in number five that we will comply with the terms of the develop, the redevelopment agreement with the village. We have an obligation to comply with it because we're a party to that document. I'm not sure why that finds its way into this resolution.
Do you have a problem with that being conditioned in the resolution?
I do.
Why?
Because who's gonna make a judgment whether, why is the planning board in a position to make a judgment whether we're in compliance or not? You're not a party to it. I don't want the fact that if, this won't happen, but if we're in a discussion with the town as to whether there's a violation there, that the planning board should be in a position to make a judgment that they not issue a permit or something because we're in violation of a condition of our resolution? Those are two separate documents.
You're not suggesting the applicant's not gonna comply with redevelopment agreement, are you?
No, I'm suggesting, of course not, that the town may make an unfounded allegation that we're not. That, it just, I don't understand why it's in here as a...
Standard language.
It's, you're not a party to it, I'm not sure why it's frankly the planning board's business.
We're not a party to all your other permits either.
No, and you're not, but you're not making, putting us in the position where a violation of that gives you some right, where it appears you do here, because if you allege I'm in violation of that agreement, then my...
Planning board's gonna be the least of your problems.
I'm putting our objection on the record. I am, I don't think it's appropriate.
Okay.
So noted.
Noted.
Sounds so noted.
All right. Are we good?
I think, the only other, I think right now, if we could ask, do you want to see on the, I also want to... It's the second half of it, did that come out, 21? 32.
You just did that.
I think maybe they took the... I think there's, if you look at your condition number 34, I think that like, there was a sentence there that I think got carried over from somewhere.
Yeah, you're right.
I think we put a, the end, we put a period at the end of the first line.
Yeah.
Right. It's a cut and paste somehow.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll accept that change.
Do you want to answer? Chuck, can you show, I don't know if you have it in the plan, is there some way to show where that, where we're gonna be doing that video inspection with regard to the rail, just to give Paul some idea of what it is? Since without Mario here, I can't...
Video inspection of, oh, under the railroad?
Yeah. Just in terms of...
Because the next structure, your connection is only about 25 feet away, so that makes no sense to video paper there. The concern is, after that structure, where it flows, you testified that it goes on, your engineer justified it goes underneath the railroad. So we would like to see a videotape at least underneath the railroad or to the next downstream structure, if he knows where that is, at this time of day. We're not looking to go 700, if you want to put a cap on it, 300 feet, because that's the typical spacing of manholes, that's fine. Put a cap on it, it's not...
Okay. What was the number? Again, I just, I apologize, but it's something that wasn't in before, which means I don't have my engineer to ask him what we're committing to in terms of cost. Okay, if you could, one second.
But didn't the two engineers, Merrill, didn't the two engineers speak about?
No, it just said it would be videotaped downstream, it was never discussed in a great way.
I don't recall seeing or discussing 35.
35.
Nor did my engineer, so I don't think it was in the letter.
Is this, is this your...
You're talking about the materials for the walkway and...
No, this is 35 in the conditions.
No, I'm sorry, 35 in the conditions.
The other one. Okay, is there any?
They were having to clean all our inlets. Counsel, is this the last issue? Because you can give us another one while he's checking that if it is...
Okay, maybe they can explain it a different, okay. And after that, number forty, again, I don't remember discussing or seeing a weed barrier discussed. I'm not sure what that is, why one detail was called out. I mean, we did revise landscape plans. Those were submitted and there's items pursuant to the review letters. I don't know if it's yours or if it was Susan's.
The weed barriers that go on the...
Probably geotextile layer under the mauls is pretty standard.
Did your landscape architect object to it?
Well, the issue was if we didn't show it on the plan and it wasn't discussed, it's just disconcerting to have new requirements put in, in the resolution. I mean, they're, look, it's, the bottom line is there's cost issues that things get added in, and it's $7,000 here and $5,000 there.
Where do you feel you grabbed that from?
I don't know where it came from. That's kind of...
Mark Rossmann?
Came from, I believe it came from Omlund's office.
Which one? I'm sorry.
Forty? Number thirty-five and number forty.
Both of them are yours, Chuck.
Yeah, 35 and 40.
Right.
Says sheet L, L 200. That's what it's referring to. If I'm reading right.
I don't remember if the weed barrier was in the detail we brought or not. I personally don't like them.
What weed barrier? They work if they're installed properly.
They stop weeds, but I think they create other problems.
Yeah, if there's not proper drainage underneath, and if it's not a...
I find it sends the water onto the sidewalk.
Keeps the masons busy.
I don't have any problem with weed barriers.
You put in rocks. Put in green concrete, you never have trouble.
It's still property. I would hope they would want to maintain it.
Yeah, it's green. It's carpeted. At first, I thought it was lawn. My wife says, no, it's carpeted. I stopped on, no, it's carpeted.
I would take that. Yeah, the other problem with the weed barriers are that if you don't replace those every couple of years, they just sort of start to sum up and curl up, so if we don't require them to replace it, why bother putting it in in the first place?
They do it in all those drainage areas. Before they put rocks, you put this barrier down, so when the rocks move away, the barrier comes up. You got to put more rocks down. But it does serve a purpose.
I'm just not sure it's the best solution.
I defer to...
I think maintenance, you know, weekly maintenance of picking the weeds and stuff is...
Yeah, but that doesn't get done. Do you pick weeds, Mike?
I've heard of it. I never did weed. But weeds didn't bother me either.
Do we have many more of these?
Chuck, no rush, but our dinner plans are in your hands.
But we didn't, I don't know that we had it.
I personally have no problem with striking number forty out of it.
Well, that's...
Number 35, I don't remember if we discussed it or not.
I can't find that comment, if it was in our, ours or not.
Which one, 35 or 39?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a geotextile fabric. It's nothing, if we ask for it, that's all that is.
Well, I think your point is that...
Well, if you know, if we're not in agreement, Mr. Chairman, and I think the experts can get together and they can solve it, we can hear this next meeting.
Now, now, Michael.
There's a lot of reclaiming issues.
I'm sure, I mean, if we're going to sit here and we're going to question what the experts could put in.
The question, the question is whether or not it was something that was discussed and agreed to, not whether...
Not now.
They're not here to answer that question. So it's either, if you're going to take it out and it's meaningful...
Right, but, but the point is, is that if our expert, you know, our professional at this late point brings it up, then the question is why? And so we can look back and find why. You can find why, then we have to...
But if we can't find why...
Do you remember it being brought up?
Landscaping?
I mean, if we can't find it, and we, none of us recall talking about this.
Well, we talked about landscaping.
We did talk about landscaping.
We talked in depth. We talked, and Susan talked about edging and, and other stuff.
I do remember all that.
If you think I can remember what she talked about, weed mats or another term, I mean...
We talked about trees.
I would, I would suggest that if none of us around the table can remember it, it's a safe...
I mean, this, this is a screenings paving, the paving right around the screening of the transformer. Where the screenings paving, I don't even know that it... It can't be very substantial.
So why don't we just remove that and be done with it?
And what about the other issue about 35?
Well, I was going to come back to that.
If I don't keep one, I really got to compromise.
So...
Forty is out?
Yeah.
Forty is out?
Forty's out.
Well, 35 and our, we haven't discussed it.
But there were a number of issues that were discussed engineer to engineer that, you know, were kind of like on a sidebar that said, well, you know, they'll take care of that. And if they talked about them, wonderful. If they didn't talk about them, I don't know how they wound up in here, but I can't answer that question. Somebody must have...
We understand. That's why we're waiting for Chuck to have it.
Yeah, but I don't know if Chuck is going to have the answers.
I don't have any problem with pulling that one with the...
We have, we're going to pull it.
It's all about maintenance anyway. 35, it's a little bit tougher of a question, as Michael says. On the other hand, I can't imagine they wouldn't want to clean the inlets anyway, just to make sure their property doesn't get flooded.
Yeah, it must have been talked to at a meeting, because I see the notes that, because L 200 was the left by seventeen, it was a handout. And there's notes here that say add weed barrier. So it must have been discussed, Eric, it's Eric's handwriting, so he must have brought that up.
But if he, but if it's in his thing, that's part of the plan, why do we have to have it as a separate condition?
Did we put it on the plan? Or does he have notes on the plan?
He has notes on the plan.
Well, I was at the meeting, Phil, we spoke to you today.
Let's not worry about the weed barriers. We're okay without it, so let's go back to...
No, 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 I don't think we are.
Oh, I thought we said we were.
I didn't say, I don't think we are.
I had suggested it.
No, I, you know, if they have it on a note, the engineers have talked about it, there is a reason for requiring it. I'm not going to overrule an engineer. I'm not a landscape expert.
I think 35 is a more, I think 35 is a more serious one, actually, by the way.
Again, I don't know the import of both of them. I certainly understand 35, and I certainly understand the other one.
Is there, is there any way, I mean, I'm just trying to see if we can cut this cord or not here. Is there any way to have language incorporated that somehow says, I'm just doing this glibly, but I don't know how to come up with the right wording, whatever was agreed to, you know, meaning, no, no, I'm serious, meaning, you know, this revised landscape details to incorporate actually changes, you know, changes agreed to by, you know, I mean, I'm trying to find a way of...
It does, it does say that, Harold, you're right. If you look at the first sentence of decision.
We're bound by our state.
It's granted. As set forth in the plans, reports, representations, testimony, stipulation, exhibits offered by the applicant. So that catch-all phrase is intended to capture those sidebar meter.
So they can talk afterwards?
You could put in something like you're talking about, and you could leave it up to the two engineers to work out.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
You can do that.
The problem is they're not, the problem is Eric's not here, and he was the one who was at the meeting. Their engineer isn't here. I don't think anybody wants to hold up the vote on this. I think this is a way of, of, you know, getting through this. They'll agree to it. I'm sure it'll be just fine.
And that line's already in here.
Well, no, you'd have to, you'd have, no, no, you'd have to revise number forty to say, and again, I'm not coming up with the right language, but revise landscape details to incorporate changes agreed to or discussed or whatever by the respective engineers, period. I, I don't know how to put it differently than that, and I'm open to others, you know, I'm not wordsmithing very well here on the spot, so, but that's, that's the point I'm trying to make. That way, we don't have to sit here and try and imagine what it was that was discussed, which is really all we're doing at this point. Michael doesn't, Michael doesn't, you know, Michael thinks it's important enough, and I agree. I mean, if it was, I mean, if it was something that was agreed to, whether or not it was within my earshot or not, you know, if it somehow worked out, then it should be incorporated.
You could just indicate items 35 and 40 are subject to agreement by the two engineers, failing that the town engineer. That's all. Because you have to have a solution.
Okay.
You have to have a solution. Maybe worked out between...
I mean, generally, this is not the way we want to do things, but...
If not the town engineer makes the decision.
Generally, it's not what we would want to do, but under these circumstances, without the professionals here...
That way, it doesn't have to come back.
For those two ideas, it's fine.
Okay.
Makes sense?
We're trying to get rid of ambiguity, so we're not debating things later.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I move the resolution. I, I move the, resolution is amended.
Second?
Sorry, was there something else? I thought we said there was something else.
Just a question. I apologize. It's been, the parking, you characterized it, Pat, as a waiver. Well, of the parking size, the dimension, as opposed to a variance, because I know the proofs that I thought we put in were enough to cover C two.
The last direction I got from Iron Grule on this issue was that the signage was variances and the other relief was waivers. The grounds for, the two are basically the same.
Well, that's why I, yeah, I understand. And I do think that it is in the design, design standard section of the plan, but it happens to be an area that they're still undecided law of it, and that's why I'm nervous about it, and I was changing waiver to variance. The only other question I would, I guess, and I apologize for getting caught up in the minutia, to add something that says that the proofs were adequate regardless of whether it's a variance or a waiver, since C two versus the exception. And thank you, because there is case law that seems, there is case law that seems to create a problem in that regard. Thank you. I apologize.
No apologies necessary.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the resolution be adopted as amended.
All right, second?
Roll call.
And Mr. Colton Max?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosso?
Yes.
Mr. Hutt?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for our job. I will see you in October, September?
October, September. The first, the first meeting.
All right, thanks, everybody.
December.
Well, we got so few people in, it was too... All right, okay. Thank you.
I make a suggestion.